Right?
Well, honestly, and they probably can't.
Then let's find back to that.
My.
I love the video. Because who cares?
Funny, I see it's kind of.
But you see how it kind of takes a while.
So.
Maybe they're reconsidering.
What trip was all over and backers are all there.
And everyone's all over range.
Did you hear it say?
Yeah.
But.
Recording already?
That's why I write. People were never, uh, like I swear over last summer. They wouldn't buy out of contract. It was just a one month contract and I had left my soul. They bring that number over, but they weren't. I felt like we fired. He was like, oh, all this pressure and pressure system. People are irritating us on Monday morning.
Is it because we posted up here?
First.
Like maybe because it was already running.
All right, so. Um, to be a fighter.
I'd like to call this, uh, school board, the District of Surgeon Abe, regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May twenty first of two thousand twenty five to order. Would everyone please rise to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Mr. Mees, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Strickell?
Here.
Commissioner Schultz?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Stefani?
Here.
Commissioner Jenner John?
Here.
Commissioner Hawes?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Senna?
Here. Next year, though, you have the agenda in front of you, plus it was sent out in your packet. Uh, there is a few, the actual agenda itself is not changing, but there's a couple of of internal candidates and stuff that that we will do some some adjustment. We'll talk to you when we get to that point. So the agenda, if we can have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, that'd be great.
I'll move to present the agenda as it does, as it presented. Second.
All right, we have motion by Commissioner Hawes, second by Commissioner Meyer to adopt the agenda. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So, um. Actually, we we first we are, we are down to the student council report, which we have next year's folks here, right?
Yes.
We got Lauren and Mia, right? Maya, so sorry, sorry about that. See, I'm worried.
It's bad.
Yeah, I'm terrible. Good with math. So, um. I guess just give us a little update, what's happening?
I was told on a scale of one to ten, President Stefani, that tonight's report will be a lot of battles.
Yeah.
One of the two, I won't say, which was a little more confident in the level of the report than the other. But they'll be giving us reports for the next year and here together for the first time.
So maybe playing at the Holiday Inn this weekend, right?
All the different stuff? Yeah, never mind. Go ahead, what do you got for us, ladies?
Last week is teacher appreciation appreciation week. So on Sunday, we came and decorated the sidewalks. We provided baked goods for teachers every single day throughout the week. Um, and then also tomorrow, we have our spring plane, which is a new thing starting this year. So this past week, we've had a kickball tournament going on. So our kickball tournament finale is tomorrow. So it's the winning class, which I believe was the sophomores against the teacher team. So that'll be interesting. Um, and then along with the tournament, we also are signing yearbooks, which is really exciting because we usually don't get our yearbooks until like the last week. So we actually have it in advance and that's also like an extended lunch period. So it's really just fun for everybody and I'm really looking forward to that.
And then also at our last meeting, we planned, started planning homecoming. So we picked our theme, it's going to be Renaissance there. And so we figured there is some good and fun games that come along with that. And then coming up on May twenty nine, um, we're having some students from parochial schools come in for a shadowing day. So I think we have about fifteen students from student council that are going to help some parochial students come in and explore the high school a little bit. I'm really looking forward to that. I think we have a lot of kids coming in, so it's a good experience for them. That's pretty much all we have.
It's quite a bit. That's good. That's good. And did Dan tell you that after you give your report, you don't have to stay all night? And okay, good.
They're aware, they also know with tonight's recognition, we'll have a recess and then what? So they may stay and mingle.
Yeah.
We'll see what they have going on.
Yeah, tonight's a little different, but normally.
We've also talked about how they need to provide baked goods at some point. And look, Maya already brought me from the soccer dinner, right? Some leftover dessert, so gold star there. Thank you, ladies. Um, maybe very briefly, we'll hit you up more next year, but since we're about to honor some seniors and that's where you're at next year. In the kind of way early poll, just talk to the board a little bit about what you're thinking as we're almost to the end of your junior year, about what you might do after high school.
I'll go first. So I think I briefly mentioned that last meeting, but I plan on attending the University of Alabama in Tuscaloosa. Um, I'm planning on going for political science and my goal is to get my law degree eventually. Um, I don't necessarily want to be a lawyer, but I'd like to be involved in politics. I have a big passion for civic engagement and for public speaking, public debate. I've been using government, mom child. So I really plan on making a change in our community. I'm not like on the Y board, so Mr. Chinoalgo, so I like making change and I just plan on doing more like leadership roles and more like community engagement in the future.
Thank you, Laura.
For me, I kind of have less of an idea.
And that's okay.
Except I'm interested in Madison, also Florida State University. And my major, I'm not, it's, once again, I'm not quite sure, but I really like math and so I'm pretty well fine.
Very good. Well, we look forward to the updates from you ladies on all sorts of things over the next year.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have the public, uh, comments section. We are going to have a recognition in just a moment. I think that's why a lot of people are here. But if anybody's here to address the school board, uh, this is the time. If you do, uh, want to address the board, uh, come to the podium and you're asked to share your name, address, and be aware that, uh, comments are limited to three minutes. I I will raise my hand at two minutes. So I don't, do we have anybody here for that? No, we're through COVID, so that's not happening, but you know, we had that happen a lot during COVID, but but it's good, it's good. Um, so that brings us down to honestly, the recognition portion, so.
Yes, if I could call Principal Nervy forward. We've got some students and families in attendance as, uh, Mr. Nervy's getting all set, right? The school board may have heard, we had a nice senior recognition program this afternoon in front of the whole student body. So a number of the seniors that are here tonight were recognized as were some of their classmates, which was great. Um, uh, parents, as we do the recognition, right? We'll get everybody up there as far as students, we will pause. I'll do a couple, uh, snapshots for a good old Facebook and you're invited to step forward and take shots. You don't have to worry about a dirty glare from your son or daughter because I'm inviting you. So then you can use those at graduation or anything you want. So I I see a couple moms looking at their children right now. So it's all good, just put it on me. It's just picture it a snowy day, I'm getting blamed for whether we have school or not, put it on me, we're good. Principal Nervy, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. This is always one of the highlights, one of the fun, um, and not that every board meeting isn't a fun night. But this is a really fun one, um, for me, as we get to recognize and honor our our high honor students. So these are students who, um, over the course of seven semesters, um, three and a half years, because we cut it at, uh, the end of semester of their senior year, um, have earned a four point O, which is, um, amazing out of a four point O scale. Um, so these students have worked really, really hard and I think it's important to have them recognized in front of you and and our viewers watching. So I'm going to call them up and have them come up and then, um, I asked each of them to prepare just a quick five minute speech. Right, has got that, I asked, no, okay. Um, I'll just ask them to introduce them, uh, or ask them to kind of share where they're going and what their plans are. All of these students, um, every single one of them were recognized today, actually, um, is, uh, Superintendent Chinoalgo had said, we had our scholarship and academic awards, um, night or day today. Um, it's been at night typically during the senior night and we moved it during the day. I think I shared this with you last month, um, and we really wanted all of our students to see it. So it was an all school assembly, so they could all come in and see this. Um, calculating the dollars, um, our students raised over, or not raised, earned over a million dollars in scholarships, um, which is just amazing for our school, um, for our students. So it was just a really fun day, um, for all the students to see that. So as we bring them up, so I'm going to ask Haley DuBois, DuBois. Braden Evers. Abe Howard. Isabel Lehman is Cypher, so you might recognize her. Jack Connor. Jack here. Um, Ozzy, Ozzy Langfeld. Hayden Luters. Oh, no, I don't think he was trying to, to be able to. Julia Maholski. Alexa Wilson. Gabe Potter. Luke Selly. And Trey Winkie. To come up here, I'm going to be recognized. Um, I also just wanted to, um, mention that, um, Julia and Luke, um, are valedictorians this school year and Trey is our salutatorian. So all these students up here have worked extremely hard this year, uh, or throughout their four years of high school. I mean, it's, it's exciting to see them, uh, just really, a week from tomorrow is their last day and then graduation on the thirty first. So congratulations on all of your work. Four point O is, uh, four point O or above is amazing. So you shall feel very, very proud of yourselves. Do you want to share with the board real quick what your plans are?
Yeah, I'll be attending North Central College in Aprilville, Illinois for mathematics.
Uh, I will be attending Michigan Tech in Michigan for general mathematics as well.
Um, I'm attending Carleton College in Minnesota, um, on a pre-med track and a major in either biology or chemistry.
I'm attending UW Madison on a pre-med track and a major in biology.
I'm going into the United States Army and coming back in spring for spring semester college.
I'm attending UW Madison for pre-business, probably either international studies as a major or economics.
Um, I was attending UWGB and I'm planning to double major in computer science and philosophy.
I'll be attending Dartmouth College in, in over the Hampshire and so hopefully double majoring in environmental studies and sustainability.
I'll be attending UW Madison and I will be going into culinary science and hopefully, uh.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Let's give a round of applause. Want to just come together a little bit, we'll get ready for the big Facebook picture. Any parents just kind of come on in, you can come right around the front if you want, or you can go over my shoulder in a moment, I'll slide out of your way once I get the first one here. Okay, everybody ready? Here we go, we'll hit a couple right here. Looking great, I'll slide out of the way, parents, go ahead.
And I said it today during our, um, during our awards assembly, but honestly, these students, and they know it, but a huge shout out to all of the families, um, behind all these students for supporting them, working with them. So thank you all for, for all the efforts that you put into because you raise, uh, so amazing, raising kids and it'll be fun to see you all across the state here in two weeks. So congratulations.
And I think we're going to just take a quick break, we're going to say congrats and so forth, and that way you all don't have to sit around for the riveting board reorganization, which is right after this. So, uh, we're going to go in recess for just a couple of moments here.
Stay right here, they're going to right on down the line, congratulations. Congrats. Who's even here for a week and a half? Congratulations.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. All right. Oh. All right, we are back in session. Uh, we are now down to the board reorganization portion, um, of the meeting. Uh, so I guess.
Yeah, I can run with this part.
Run with this part and then we'll, we'll start doing.
Yeah, we'll try to make it as smooth as possible, since everyone knows it's one of those things, we only do one time a year. So I'm just going to cover a part of what we have in the background document, because sometimes wonder, people wonder like, well, how does this really work? And then, uh, Anne Demese is going to cover a little information for you too. So we'll try to make it as clear and painless as possible. All right, so we know that by our own board policy, we're supposed to have an annual board reorganization meeting, um, on or within thirty days after the fourth Monday in April, right? So that's when the terms of service, so like Commissioner Stott, right? That's when his service started, so within, uh, thirty days of that, we're supposed to have it. So, uh, policy zero one five two officers, um, and determine nomination boarding process really states that the board shall elect from among its members a president, vice president, treasurer and clerk. Such election shall occur again in the timeframe I already touched on, I won't repeat that. Election of officers shall be by majority of boarding members. Secret ballots may be utilized only for the election of officers. Where no such majority exists, on the first valid vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of valid votes. So somebody recall going back years, some, we did this piece of paper system and I'll touch on that and that's possibility, but we don't necessarily have to go that route either. Uh, continuing, except for those who plan to fill a vacancy, officer shall serve for one year and until their respective successors are elected or shall qualify theoretically, right? One year from tonight, more or less, we will have the election again. All right, there's a few other details about depositories and stuff that, uh, for school funds that we'll touch on, uh, but we don't need to, uh, go through too much of that now. So, all right, pause there. Anne, you want to just kind of talk us through what we've got here, just so it's as simple as possible for the group and then we'll get going?
Well, there's two different ways the nomination process goes. You can do paper or voice. Um, in most recent years, we've done voice, but I always have to paper as a backup plan and in front of you, you have envelopes and in each envelope is if we go the paper route is a nomination piece of paper and, uh, a voting piece of paper for each of those positions if we go the paper route. The other route is to go by voice where, um, you can verbally nominate people for positions. There is also the opportunity in having in front of you a piece of paper with the wording of, um, how, once we make a nomination, is we suspect there's only one lovely candidate who's willing to take on the duties. Um, then you can close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot. So if we go that voice route, we don't need these at all. And this is the wording if you need it. So again, um, people will take and nominate the positions and then President Stefani, if we do that, uh, will ask three times. It sounds a little bit ridiculous, but he will ask three times if there's additional nominations so that we don't miss anybody. And then he'll look for the motion, this motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for the person if there's only one candidate. So I think that helps people understand. Yes.
So unless there's objections, then we're going to try the voice, because that's what we've done recently and it seems to work. It's more speedy and seems to do the same thing. So I will start with president, uh, just because it's number one in your pack. Uh, I'll open nominations for president. If someone wants to nominate.
I nominate Mike Stefani for president.
Okay. Here's the first call for further nomination. Second call for further nominations. Third call for further nominations. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous, unanimous vote for Mike Stefani as president. Which I feel strange saying.
I move to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Mike Stefani as president.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous vote for Mike Stefani as president. Further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Now, just for fun, I think Vice President Jenner John, it's fun to point out to President Stefani that initially we thought he was going to be gone tonight. Fortunately, your wife Annette is under the weather, right? She was supposed to be
Yeah.
a part of a recognition event at the hospital. So we have people over there too.
Yeah.
And, uh, about forty five minutes or so before the meeting, Mike lets know that unfortunately, Annette is under the weather, so.
So.
He was coming to the meeting, otherwise Tina and I had told him, we all know what happens when you miss a meeting, you end up getting volunteered for things, so.
Exactly.
I guess that was that anyway.
There you go. Um. That's it, so that's president. Uh, vice president. Uh, I will open nominations for vice president. And we have. We have a nomination for.
I nominate Tina Jenner John as vice president.
Great. Um, first call for further nominations. Second call for further nominations. Third call for further nominations. Uh, then I'm looking for a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous vote for Tina Jenner John as vice president.
I move to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Tina, Tina Jenner John as vice president.
Thank you, we have a second.
Second. Second.
Yeah, okay, uh, we have a motion. Yeah, okay, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner Meyer. To uh close nominations and cast unanimous vote for Tina Jenner John as vice president. Further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Tina.
And I'm thinking you both accept it, yeah?
Yeah.
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 So, sorry. All right, so now we are down to treasurer. And kinda similar process here, open nominations for treasurer. Um. Heck, I'll do it. Mike Stefani nominates Allison Haas for treasurer.
Second.
Right?
No, sorry, right, true. Open nominations?
Yeah, for I had to go through the first call, second call first. Um, uh, so uh, first call for further nominations. Second call for further nominations. Third call for further nominations. Since we have a single nomination, then I'm looking for a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous vote for Allison Haas as our treasurer.
I move to close nominations, casting unanimous ballot for Alison Haas as treasurer.
Okay. And do I have a second? Second. All right, that's good, we got. We get a a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Howard. To uh, close nominations and cast unanimous vote for Alison Haas as treasurer. Um, further discussion? Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. That's great. So, in that spirit of fun, let's see if we can find somebody that will do the uh for with a clerk position with which Beth. Formerly uh had, uh, as you, as you may or may not know, the clerk position is not a. Huge weight of things that you do in addition to your board responsibilities that you currently do. You will sign for some things that basically are prepared for you. In fact, there's two little documents right here that we have tonight, that basically you're signing off on the last board meeting, the minutes and so forth. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a grueling position, so do I have?
There's usually two signatures, right? The president signs.
Yeah, it's.
To your point.
Yes.
And the clerk signs.
Yes, so it's, it's kinda like a uh. Uh, or checking a balance, really. So um, do we have anybody with that would love to uh do this position? No traveling out of town for it, it's all good. It's just here, I'm trying to sell this, so who do we have? Who do we have? Everybody's looking down, look at their shoes.
Or someone can nominate somewhere.
Yeah, it's true.
Don't happen.
I'm gonna get Angie Cruz asked the.
There we go. All right. All right, so, so. Right.
Question?
Yes.
Does this require being at convention?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
It's really seriously like. Just signing a few things and.
Yeah, it's not a. I can't think of a single thing that would involve going beyond just our regular school board meeting attendance, for the most part, which we all have life habits, but yeah. I can't think of anything on hand right now.
No, nothing have a ton, and the only additional is we, when we certify the election.
Oh, that's right.
Um, there's.
Okay, just checking.
In taxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just.
They got taxes, they're right, yeah, there's, there's just things that you're. You're certifying as well as myself or others on the board that you just signed on, that's really what it is.
Do they have to pay the taxes?
Yeah, for the kids.
Yeah. All right, so I have first call for further nominations. Oh, I I should, uh, no, no, what did we say? Second call for further nominations. Third call for further nominations, I feel like I should say Bueller, you know, like. Oh, yeah, yeah. Since it is a single nomination, then I'm looking for a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous vote for Angie Cruz as clerk.
Move to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Angie Cruz as clerk.
Second. There was, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner Spricka. Um, for uh, a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous vote for Angie Cruz as clerk. Um. Further discussion? Hearing none, alls in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you for your service.
Excellent.
Yeah, in fact, right out of this chute, there's two little pieces of paper there.
I'm gonna interrupt.
Yeah, I know, we got two, two, two Johnny handcuffs. All right, uh, so we are done with that, so then we have the next point here is uh appointment of board secretary. Um, which is Mr. Nice, uh, CISA representative, which is Allison Haas. Legislation legislative representative, which is uh Wayne Spricka. And E E N representative, which is Mr. Schultz. Uh. We need, I would assume we need a motion for that.
Each one.
Yes.
Each one, so I think here it's pretty normal procedure, right, to have the person in Mr. Demese's position serve as our secretary, but. Somewhere in our local law, there's a situation where we, you know, purposely indicate that. Uh, so if someone wanted to make a motion, second, that went out, Cruz agree to each of those four.
Move to appoint Anne Demese as our board secretary.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner Starr to to uh appoint uh Anne Demese as board secretary. Further discussion? Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Next, uh, same thing for CISA representative.
I would love to offer the opportunity to any other board member to be a CISA representative. I've done it for a couple of meetings now and learned some stuff, but I think it could share the opportunity.
And basically what it involves is going to.
So one, one time a year, you go to CISA. It was last week, um, and they have dinner, you gotta meet other CISA representatives from other boards in the region. And CISA has a whole bunch of support services that they offer districts within our area. Um, and last year, they gave us the equivalent of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars of services. According to, she probably gave me, um, some of them are, you know. All sorts of different things, so they're kind of, so it's a way to learn about what CISA can offer for our school district, it's just another way to connect with. Where it's in in the area, I think.
And really, since we're members of CISA seven, right, so all of the districts in CISA seven have an obligation to have a representative. Right, so if someone, just as if all of a sudden, all the boys got sick, right before Allison was gonna go to the meeting, right? If something happens, you don't make it to the meeting, it's not the end of the world, our district's not in trouble or anything like that, so. It's again, one meeting a year down at the CISA office in in Green Bay, kind of by Voyager Park there, just up along the river. The office is close to that, if anyone might be willing to do it.
Just to add a little bit more, I went to Costco before I went to the meeting. And you can be part of this um bigger representation on the CISA board. And then they may send you to a national meeting about CISA. Which, um, we're not on that right now, but every year, um, people from our, you know, from the region, I forget how many. Member, like, members make up the CISA board, but at some point, Sergeant Bay might wanna be on the CISA board. We, we currently are not.
Which. If you ever want, as a board member, want to expand your opportunities, there are so many things heavy to do with school boards from a. From a regional and state level that, that, I mean, I get pummeled with emails, I'm sure you get pummeled with emails right then on that. That, that there are many opportunities, so speak to one of us if you're ever, ever wanna do that sort of thing, just book any, that's exactly true. So, but the minimum requirement is that you go to this once a year meeting in Green Bay if you can make it. So, would anybody wanna do that? Are you ready, doing it again?
I mean, yeah, I guess, like, it is close, it is close to Costco, so.
All right, I'll make a motion that Commissioner Haas is our CISA representative for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second. All right, we have a motion by uh Commissioner Starr and second by Commissioner Schultz to uh. To appoint uh Allison Haas as our CISA representative. Um, further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we're to the legislative representative. Uh, Mr. Spricka, are you still interested?
Gladly.
All right. Uh, give a motion to. To uh. Let Wayne do this.
I move to nominate Wayne Spricka as our legislative representative.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Haas uh made the motion, and uh Commissioner Cruz seconded it. To uh allow Wayne Spricka to be our legislative representative. Further discussion? Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there we go. Uh, and then the E E N representative is Commissioner Schultz. Still willing to do that?
I mean, I. Sure.
Yeah.
Zero point zero. Yep.
Communication.
Which, he didn't do anything wrong, once upon a time, as a quick review, the county had all their special ed directors and a board member meet about different programs. So that hasn't happened, it hasn't needed to happen in recent years, we've said it's possible that that could come back or something similar. Uh, but yes, Commissioner Schultz did not miss a meeting or something like that, and uh, you know, each year, we talk about this now with Lindsey Berry, right, Sharon Sanderson before. Um, said, well, you know, if there's a need, you have a board member rep we can always touch base with, but at this point, there hasn't been, we'll see what the next year brings.
Then I'm gonna ask, since it's kind of a defunct committee, do we need to do this?
It's on our list, so theoretically, I, so theoretically, well, we could do it, we can always remove it from the list in the future. Which member falls under board policy zero one?
Well, let's do it.
Five, one, point one.
Fine.
We'll fulfill the obligations of our policy by appointing somebody to it.
That's right, all right, sounds good.
But you can modify our policy for the future.
We should.
Yeah. That's in two readings, we can, we'd have it.
That's no man, I mean.
In the meantime, I'll make a motion, uh. Jake Schultz, sorry, E E N representative for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Fair enough.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Starr, second by Commissioner Haas to to um. Appoint Commissioner Schultz to this ribbon committee of E E N representative. Uh, further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, then we have appointment of delegate, uh, Stefani, an alternate, which was chism to the W A S B convention.
Um, I think. Yeah, and this is uh similar to your question earlier, Angie, right? This is the convention that happens every January in Milwaukee, right? All board members in the state of Wisconsin are invited, right? No one's obligated. If a person thinks, A, I might go to convention, and B, I'd be willing to spend a portion of that time at the delegate assembly with reps from other school boards talking about different. Uh, topics, issues that may eventually make the W A S B, I'll say official list of things they're promoting, which still doesn't necessarily mean. Representative Kitchens or others are passing legislation on that, if you will, but it's just kind of part of the. School Board Association process, at least in our state. That's what it involves, and what we've done in recent years, right away, we said, all right, let's have a delegate who's planned, and again, it's not the end of the world if they can't go. Let's have an alternate, and then we at least have two people ready to represent as fast needed. But again, there's no penalty on the district if convention happens and neither of our reps are able to go.
Uh, I would just throw out to add onto that, you know, either, either we, like, Allison has gone for for many years, uh. Mr. Schultz, you've gone, Damian, you've been going lately, you know, if one of you could just. Or or someone else that plans, I don't know, Andy, if you're planning to go, or Kathy, whomever, but. Uh, we just need to replace Beth's.
Yep. I also should add that most districts handle it the way we do. In that whoever ends up as the rep, if you go to the delegate assembly, you just kind of vote the way you see fit, knowing there's not. You know, legislation that's locked into that, there are some school boards. That actually go kind of item by item through the packet in advance, and kind of have their own little internal vote to give the rep. Um, direction, if you will, when they go in January. My previous district may or may not have done that, and seemed a little bit excessive to me, but it, whatever works some places, and that's the way they wanna roll it here. So, uh, given the fact that you have done this before, uh. You, you voted good conscience, you know, when on on the items there.
Right.
But we have never, like, itemized it.
No.
And sent you down to the list?
No.
Oh, oh, we could, if you, if you, if you want, right?
Yeah, anything that makes more time for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would, it would take time.
And. I. I mean, this is cynical, but I don't, I don't know how much it really makes a big difference. I just.
Yeah.
I, I. Is that a good? Point you said? Cause it, it kinda is what it is, and it is something that are decided.
Yeah. Kind of.
I was planning on going first year, you know, just to gain the knowledge, the insight of it, so. Let's throw you down. Let's throw you down. Sure, again, it doesn't matter if you end up not going, it's not the end of days, one of us will.
Yeah, certainly to nominate, Mr. Starr, I'll make the nomination.
Okay.
As the alternate or as the delegate?
I think you, we make that, we can just make the whole, that whole line, appointment of delegate. Stefani and alternate, uh, Mr. Starr to the W A S B convention.
That's the motion.
That's the motion by Mr. Spricka, all right, second, second by Commissioner Schultz. All right, all, uh, further discussion?
Do you have one further discussion point? The convention is really helpful. Like, as a new board member, I learned a ton the first year and learned more this last year, so I would recommend going, cause it was. You know, there's lots of sessions and all sorts of stuff to, to think about.
Yeah. That's right.
Every year, there seems to be a theme, something that, that is kind of like permeating most of the, of the uh, oh, discussions and.
Is it Renaissance fair?
It is not. It is, uh. You know, some, some years, I mean, it is, it is, can you decide, it is like budgetary things.
Yes.
Some, you're like, this, this one, the enlightening thing, multiple, um. Segments, we're talking about the really demographic changes of Wisconsin, and how that's impacting school districts, you know, declining enrollment, that sort of thing. Which is really honestly, when you start looking at the numbers and stuff, it became very enlightening. How that's gonna be a strain, not just on our school district, but all school districts and and state as we move through, so. It, it, very, very interesting.
Maybe it's worth adding, when the convention stuff comes out, Andy, you'll see it too, like, they have different strands. Right, so depending on all of your interests and day job, like, if you're like, I'm really interested in like community engagement type activities, right, and all those types of things.
Yeah.
Like, they'll have multiple things each section on that, right, a little bit more, I'm trying to learn about the numbers, or. Or then kind of mix and match, I have, I usually kind of focus on the leadership stuff, and then some of the community engagement is kind of where I split mine, but. Just kind of depends on each person can do with that one.
Um, so we have motion, a second, uh, discussions happen, I'm gonna call the question, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, motion carried, so now we're down to designate the official board meeting date, the third Wednesday of the month. Uh, backstory, I'll say that this was talked about um several years ago. Uh, and we, we, we kinda, a board member was discussing maybe not on Wednesday, on Monday, and we ended up. I was just saying, we, we talked about a lot of these days, other days, it's like. There's so many things going on that, that it became, we just kept Wednesday. Now, that doesn't mean it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's, that's what happened, so. I, I, I personally think, you know, I, I know we, we, we try to be. Careful with a lot of things on Wednesday nights, you know, in the, in the district, but we couldn't come up with a better time for this. And now that we moved it, thanks to a real smart guy over there, we moved the, the meetings a little earlier, I think that has helped. Uh, tremendously, so.
Must have been pointing at Wayne.
Yeah.
Oh, exactly. Well, there's more of a question.
Yeah, yeah, so. I, I, I'm, I really don't care, you know, this is up to you guys, is, is Wednesday good or not?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. All right, then let's make a mo, somebody make a motion.
I move to designate the official board meeting day, the third Wednesday of each month. Second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion by. All right, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz, I think I heard by Commissioner Schultz, uh, the second first. Um, to designate the official board meeting date, the third Wednesday of the month. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
As we're turning the page, remember, occasionally in October, we, we depart from the third Wednesday of the month because of the way the general, right, the aide comes in from the state and gives Jake a chance to put it all in the packet so no one thinks anything's being hidden, right? Just because we say the third Wednesday doesn't mean, that's not one example. The other example is occasionally January, right? When we try, depending where the convention falls, sometimes we move the regular board meeting up to the second week, so it doesn't interfere when some of us are down in Milwaukee. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that's excellent, especially for people on TV land or internet land, to understand. Um, next, we have approved the official depositories. Um, I mean, do you want me to keep going? I think you want.
Yeah, you can just read it.
Basically, Nicolay Bank and Local Government Pooled Investment Fund became the official depositories in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We also added the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, uh, during the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year. We kept, uh, all three as official depositories since then and would recommend doing so again for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, motion to approve Nicolay Bank, Local Government Pooled Investment Fund, and Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperatives as the official depositories for twenty-five, twenty-six year is recommended.
Move to approve Nicolay Bank, Local Government Pooled Investment Fund, and Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperatives as the local depositories for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Schultz, seconded by Commissioner Howard to approve uh, Nicolay Bank, Local Government Pooled Investment Fund, and Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperatives as the official depositories for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, year. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Authorize, authorization of investment powers. Business manager Jake Holtz has investment powers for the school district. A motion to authorize Jake Holtz with the investment powers for the district is recommended. Um, I, I, I kind of look at this as something he has to do.
Yep. The one time we departed from this was early in my time when we knew Tom Olson was going to be retiring the following fall. So at that time, we had the board, because we didn't know we were going to be hiring Jake yet, right? We hadn't gotten through the process, so the board basically authorized Kathy Eckers at the time in our business office and me. So we had two people, even though we weren't the business manager, authorized until we later found out who our new business manager was, who became Jake. So, yeah, I agree with you, Mike, I think it's just kind of a safeguard if we have a situation, even though Jake's not retiring anytime real soon, where, you know, this allows the board to take that action.
Make a motion to authorize Jake Holtz with the investment powers for the district.
We have a motion by Commissioner Starr, seconded by Commissioner Hawes to, uh, authorize Jake Holtz with the investment powers for the district. Further discussion? Hearing none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next one is designate the official newspaper. Uh, the Peninsula Pulse is official newspaper in the district. In May of twenty twenty-one, a bill was signed that removes requirement that fifty percent of the newspaper circulation must be paid in order to qualify to publish legal notices. With that change, we were allowed more flexibility to choose a paper. There was much discussion at that time, the pulse reaches virtually all households in our district where, uh, another paper that's paid really was declining enrollment and, and did not reach the same reach as the pulse. So, so this isn't that we're playing favors. We're trying to get notices so that the general public has the most chance that they see those notices. So that's why the pulse is selected. So a motion to approve the Peninsula Pulse and designate official newspaper for the district is recommended.
I move to approve the Peninsula Pulse as the designated official newspaper for the district. Second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz and seconded by Commissioner Jennerjohn to, uh, approve the Peninsula Pulse as the designated official newspaper for the district. Uh, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, then the next one is set board member salaries. Dan, I'm gonna let you take this one.
You got it. All right, um, after utilizing a per-meeting payment approach that dated back to two thousand four and beyond, we had a conversation in the May twenty eighteen learning session and then regular board meeting that followed. And then we moved to the annual salary approach, starting with the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, which then covered all regular meetings, special meetings, learning sessions, annual board retreat, and work group sessions as follows. Uh, please note, we have not increased board member salary amounts since shifting to that approach for eighteen nineteen. So at that time, um, and since, uh, the board president has received a twelve hundred dollar stipend, vice president one thousand fifty dollars, all other board members eight hundred forty dollars. And we should note additionally, we do offer a, a stipend of a hundred dollars per day for attendance at the annual January Education Convention in Milwaukee, uh, which occurs during the week, right? We have various week and family obligations we realize. So that's in addition to some attendance. So then a motion to maintain the current pay structure, as I just reviewed, as well as that hundred dollar stipend, uh, for attendance at the annual January Education Convention is recommended.
I move to maintain the current pay structure as presented.
Second.
Neil, motion by Commissioner Jennerjohn, seconded by Commissioner Hawes to, uh, maintain the current pay structure as presented. Further discussion?
I guess have a quick.
Yep.
Uh, prior to this, we didn't get paid per meeting, so we didn't attend the meeting, we didn't get paid. Uh, now we get paid for every meeting, whether you come or not. I think that as, as a board, it's, uh, it's our duty to try to be at all of the meetings.
Yes.
Um, and so I think we need to take that into consideration when we do this.
Absolutely, um. I mean, it kind of goes without saying, we were elected to do this job and, 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 um, represent constituents, so we should be here. So makes sense, makes sense. Um, yeah, are you advocating to go back to that old system?
No, I'm fine with this.
Stating that on the record?
To be aware that we
Yes.
Are being paid and we should be here. There's always going to be things that are going to stop us from being able to attend a meeting, but.
Yes.
I think we just need to be aware.
Very much, agreed. Well stated. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussions? I'll call a question, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are through the board reorganization. Wasn't that riveting, ladies?
I told them it was twice, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So now we are down to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda, uh, consists of the following, approve minutes of the regular meeting of April sixth, sixteenth rather, the special meeting of May seventh, the learning session of May seventh. Approve the bills, April bills that were in your packet, approve grants and donations, uh, which are as follows, Angel Fund to help pay for lunch accounts and meals, a two, two thousand dollar anonymous donation to Angel Fund, uh, was made, a hundred dollars from, uh, Ellen and Ru, uh, Russell Putzter and, uh, fifty dollars from Sue McLean, three hundred dollars from Dale Logan towards weights for the athletic department, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the James and Ty Evers towards weights for the athletic uh, department, one thousand thirty-five dollars from the Fifth Quarter Foundation towards high school boys golf. Uh, the elementary playground donations keep coming in, which is fantastic, they are as follows, forty-four hundred dollars from the D C Community Foundation, five hundred dollars from Portside Builders, one, one hundred dollars anonymous, one hundred dollars from the stu, uh, Sawyer Student Penny Jar fundraiser, seventy dollars from Ashley Adams, uh, fifty dollars from, uh, Marky, uh, Fisher, uh, fifty dollars from Lexi Ross, forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents from the Student Lemonade, uh, uh, folks, that's, that's, uh, Jeff Orange and River, Sandy and Willow Sandy, which is awesome. Thirty dollars from Bryn Orthburg, uh, twenty dollars from Trish Shaper, twenty, twenty dollars from Jennifer, uh, Lucker, twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents from Willow and River, Sandy and Jeff, uh, from their lemonade stand sales. Uh, fifteen dollars Katie Pasky, ten dollars, uh, Crystal Ruiz, ten dollars from Oscar David Castro, ten dollars from Rebecca Wesley, five dollars from Taylor Baker. Uh, a hundred dollars from Miller Art Museum for the high school art program, a hundred dollars from Nova, uh, Nellis for the So, the Sawyer Soccer Ball fundraiser, uh, five hundred dollars for the Curling Family Foundation of the D C Community Foundation, the High School Sailing Club, five hundred dollars for the Surgeon Bay PTO for Sunrise End of Year Picnic. Clipper Clay's, uh, received a thousand dollars for pharmacy fishing charters, uh, four hundred dollars from Christian Jean Court, one hundred dollars from Paula Haynes, uh, Hune's Funeral Home and, uh, Stefan and Tracy Ross. Uh, auditorium donation, six thousand dollars from Barb and Tim Brohl. Um, two thousand dollars from Interior Marine Group, uh, one thousand from Susan May, five hundred dollars Wesley Hill, five hundred dollars in the memory of Donald, uh, uh, Zinggrave, two hundred dollars from, from Randall and Barbara, uh, Fondo, uh, two hundred dollars from Green Bay Packers Give Back, that's a matching donation, uh, a hundred and fifty dollars from the Dean and, Dean and Susan, uh, Anshuts, one hundred dollars from Tom, Thomas S. Penny Junior, Alex Aiden and Ashton, uh, Gootchard, uh, Cathy and Brian Hartle, uh, uh, Kirk and Beth Ryder and Judy, uh, Hudson and Murat, excuse me, no, I slaughtered that, sorry. And fifty dollars from Scott and Lynn Brunswick and Adam Stoner as well. And forty dollars from Karen, uh, Karen Sol. Uh, the Clipper Clay team would like to extend a huge thank you to the following businesses and individuals for their donations to our recent youth tournament and fish fry we had a few weeks back. Uh, Bailey's Harbor Fish Market, uh, donated all the fish for the fish fry, uh, Nicolay Bank water for the tournament and fish fry, Dan's Cold Storage Cheese Curds and Other Products, uh, Michelle Snowbird Bake Goods for the tournament, Whitetails Unlimited trophies and a nine hundred dollar banquet donation. Knott Family won a thousand dollars, Adam Duchard Beverages for the youth tournament, Christian Court Fish Fry Beverages, Andy Johnson Fish Breeding, Hune's Family a hundred dollars, Ace Hardware Endless Supplies, Tadish Grocery Store, uh, donated multiple items, Milton Propane, Dog donated propane, pack and ship sign, uh, pack and ship plus donated signs, March of Meats donations, Forbes Funeral Home, Lakes of Man's Propane, and the Door County Rodding Fund called for all their continued support and devotion to our team, without them, we don't have a team. Thank you to everyone involved in supporting our students and programs, these grants and donations. I want to pause and just say, you're probably sick of my voice, that's a lot of donations, what an amazing thing. Although that's, that's great, what I, what I want to make. We do have, uh, approval of resignations and retirements, uh, Susan is retiring from her associate position at Sawyer School, Meredith Nelson is res, resigning from her her associate position at Sawyer School at the end of the school year. Uh, Janelle Krezbach is resigning from her, uh, I D autism teaching position in the high school. Uh, Sherry Van den Boger has resigned from her special education teaching position effective the end of the year. And Anna Fisher, Fisher is resigning from her teaching position at Sawyer effective the end of the school year as well. Point five, approve, uh, Surgeon Bay High School W I A membership renewal. Uh, we do this where required every year, and this is also to be approved in this packet. Uh, point six, approve overnight trips. Uh, per board policy twenty-three forty, district sponsor trips governs a variety of details. Surgeon Bay High School Band Director Heidi Hens and Spanish, uh, three teacher, uh, Shelley Sternard have, have assembled the proper information that aligns with guidelines and a particular, uh, forum on the topic pertaining to overnight trips. Uh, we have, uh, Neola Policy Review as presented, second reading, we did do this already, so I don't believe I need to go through every one of those.
Yes, presented.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented is recommended.
Wait, go, oh, go ahead. Vote to approve the consent agenda as, as presented.
Right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Schultz, and seconded by Commissioner Starr to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and now we are down to, thanks ladies, now we are down to the, uh, operations agenda. So we have approving of social workers, the first thing.
So a drink of water.
Yeah.
All right, and again, the board has heard about this, this is not necessarily an additional position, right? But repurposed within the special ed staff and Jake and Lindsay have talked about for a while, recent months. So, uh, District Social Worker Director, uh, pardon me, Director of Food and Services, Lindsey Berry is pleased to recommend Brittany Richardson for the position of Surgeon Bay School District Social Worker. Brittany earned her master's degree from Ferris State University in social work trauma. Prior to moving to Wisconsin, Brittany served as a social worker in Flagler County School District down in Florida for three years. Most recent, most recently, Brittany served as our special education teacher, or one of the teachers, excuse me, at T J Walker Middle School. Brittany has made considerable connection to students and families during her time in the district. As a new district social worker for us, she'll use her skills to promote parent engagement, engage students in learning, and support staff each and every day. Lucky to have Brittany in this position, and I very much looking forward to her supporting students and families. Motion to approve Brittany Richardson as our school district social worker, beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, is recommended.
I move to approve Brittany Richardson as the school district social worker, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. So.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, seconded by Commissioner Meyer to approve Brittany Richardson as this, as a school district social worker, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, the next point, approve Sunrise School, uh, Elementary School Secretary. You have a piece of paper on your desk. Uh, we have a, uh, we have a candidate on this single.
Yep, I will read from that sheet from Principal Katie Smullen. Um, we at Sunrise are so excited, she writes, to welcome Nicole Peterson as our new administrative assistant at Sunrise Elementary. Her goal comes to us with many years of experience as a dental assistant. Committee was really impressed by her kind demeanor and desire to help students and families. Nicole comes highly recommended, and again, they can't wait for her to join the team. Motion to approve Nicole Peterson as the administrative assistant at Sunrise is recommended. And as a quick note, the person currently in the position, right, Brenda Hartle, is transitioning to the business office. Next of all, just to remind you why we have this paper.
I'll make a motion to approve Nicole Peterson as administrative assistant at Sunrise.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Howard, seconded by Commissioner Hawes to approve Nicole Peterson as the administrative assistant at Sunrise. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Nicole is welcome aboard. Uh, next, we are down to approve an associate position, uh, Safe Harbor Teaching Associate at Sawyer School.
Yes, used to be bypassed, a couple of teaching positions that they're still working on, basically related to special education. I think you heard Jake and or Lindsay comment on that in a recent meeting, uh, as well. So as President Stefani said, we've got two individuals for, uh, Safe Harbor, which again is a program that the board has heard about in recent months, um, over at Sawyer. So I'll start with five A Jenny Hull. Principal Katie Devillers is pleased to welcome or recommend Jenny Hull for the teaching associate position on Safe Harbor at Sawyer Elementary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Jenny comes to us from working in a daycare setting, and she actually worked as a Safe Harbor Teacher Associate in the past in this position. She's effectively supported children of all ages and enjoys working with students who struggle with emotions and behaviors. We're, uh, looking forward to having Jenny, again, support students and teachers at Sawyer within the Safe Harbor room. Excited to have her back at Sawyer and congratulate her on this position. Motion to approve Jenny Hull as a Safe Harbor Teaching Associate at Sawyer, beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, is recommended.
I move to approve Jenny Hull as a Safe Harbor Teacher Associate at Sawyer, beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner, I believe, Spreckka, right? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Schultz. Um, I just heard it in that direction, sorry, guys. Uh, to approve Jenny Hull as a Safe Harbor Teacher. Uh to approve Jenny Hull as a Safe Harbor Teacher Associate at Sawyer beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Further discussion?
I have just a quick question, I've I've missed no green eyes on this stuff, like uh. We we are congratulating them on their new positions uh written here, like before we, before they have the position. I just. This kind of seems like a whole different thing.
Yeah, I think uh everyone at the building level is so positive, they're they're positive that the district. We will support the recommendation. Julie Nor.
And you know, as just a side note, you know, I don't ever remember in all my years that we didn't. You know, start with a recommendation, recommendation from the admin team. You know, this is, I mean, we have to approve it, hundred percent. But we've always, we've always taken their recommendation.
We've had situations, I would say, um where maybe before it got to this point. It's where we then said, oh, a concern was raised, or there was backstory, right, or sometimes a board member has said. I have a little bit of a concern, not necessarily that I vote against it, so maybe I'll just abstain from voting, so that's kind of how that has worked, and then I think as pointed out, where. Even though we're making the recommendation, if, you know, a majority of the board is like, oof, we do not think this is a good idea, and again. The way we send it out, I don't think, I can't think of an example in eleven years that all of a sudden we surprised you with that at the board meeting. But the majority of the board said, we're not comfortable recruiting this person at this time. Certainly, the recommendation could be voted down absolutely.
Of course, I'm just saying, we we haven't had that.
Usually we try to have it, so if there's a situation.
We listen to the experts that are making the recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, so uh further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed. All right, now we're down to B.
Yeah, five B Chris Salo. Uh Principal Pete Villers, please recommend Chris Salo for again, a teaching assist associate, unique position in Safe Harbor at Sawyer starting next year. Comes to us with experience as a home daycare provider, and also has been a teacher associate with Path of Door County. She additionally served as a long-term sub in both Safe Harbor and second grade at Sawyer during the school year. At Sawyer, Chris has demonstrated her great passion for her work in a compassionate way, she supports students and staff. And again, the team over there would be excited to welcome Chris Sawyer uh and congratulate her for her new position if approved uh for next year. A motion to approve Chris Salo as a teacher Harper, Safe Harbor, excuse me, teacher associate at Sawyer. Beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year is recommended.
I'll move to approve Chris Salo as a Safe Harbor Teacher Associate at Sawyer, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second recommendation on us to approve Chris Sale. As the Safe Harbor Teacher Associate at Sawyer beginning twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carry. So now we're to the first reading of the professional handbook and sal- salary and supplemental guide.
Yes, thank you. So going back to, again, a lot of this is very much review for the board, but again, for the official record, going back to the twenty fifteen, sixteen school year. We know we've had a number of changes to professional staff handbook that deal with the approval of the the new salary and supplemental pay guide and related appendices we've established. Uh since then, some years really have not seen substantive changes, while some have had more substantive changes, although nowhere near what first occurred when we implemented the current system. Uh next paragraph, really the primary update for this next year, the twenty-five, twenty-six year, as you know. Deals with professional staff salary ladder changes that were approved last month prior to approving our returning teacher contracts. In essence, we know teachers moved up, the majority of teachers, two ladder rungs in the majority of situations, sorry, just a majority twice in the same sense. And the starting salary was also increased. As we note, although not part of the current action, right, we want to revisit the starting salary again next year. Uh we're waiting on the outcome of the biennial state budget. Third paragraph, as a quick summary, two years ago, the board did approve some updates in the September twenty twenty-three meeting. Dealing with topics such as longevity pay, adding a personal day, prepaid personal day, and increasing some hourly rates in appendix D. In twenty twenty-four, some technical corrections were made, and references to some policy numbers were updated in the handbook, as well as updates that. Largely with our shift, the PTO days and an incentive for those unused days that went into effect uh for this year. As a first reading tonight, no formal action is required by the board at this time for either professional handbook. Or the accompanying professional staff salary and supplemental pay guide. Uh the board would then conduct a second reading next month, June eighteenth. Uh in our regular meeting, and then typically uh official approval files. I can continue right away, President Stefani to the next item, very similar, but for the support staff, right? Support staff just has the handbook itself, as you know, they don't have uh the whole kind of professional staff teacher compensation and related appendices. Uh that the teacher group does, so the board review reviews this handbook annually. As a first reading, again, no formal action is required tonight, board would conduct a second reading next month in the June eighteenth regular board. That's it there for those, again, first reading situations, not truly informational, technically first readings.
And then we have the next uh approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six compensation for returning non-teacher employees.
Yeah, so first paragraph reminds you what you already know, that last month, right, the board approved the updated professional staff salary ladder. Granted, majority of professional staff members increased to two ladder runs rather than the usual one. And approved returning teacher contracts, as our context, right, each year, we know we take care of the teacher group first. That is our largest and most important really teacher group, so I think it's good practice that we do that first, and then non-teachers follow it. Uh this month, the board is set to act on the twenty-five, twenty-six compensation for the non-teacher employee groups. I'll list them below so that they can either be acted on independently or all as one with the motion as we've done in recent years, so we have. Uh A, if you will, the hourly employees. We have B, our unclassified employees, largely, right, a few uh staff members in district office. And then uh C, administrative employees in our various departments or buildings. As we discussed on the May learning session, a placeholder, uh Jake had walked us through his presentation of three point seven five as used for budgeting and projection purposes. But again, the board can approve momentarily what you would like. So uh we see some other information from Business Manager Holtz. We also have the usual summary that the board likes right in front of you for action, so. As historically has been the case most years, right, we provide you three different options with kind of a range of what those are. I'm going from left to right, right, three percent was very close to that CPI figure, if I recall at the time, that was about two point nine five percent. So we see wage total, uh we see the difference versus uh what Jake had budgeted with three point seven five, well, twenty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars less. And then we see what that increase uh effectively is from uh prior year. Uh we see the middle column, three point seven five, again, the projection, the total is no difference, the increase. And then uh the four point five, which again is just context, was about halfway between the CPI and the average teacher increase. Uh because of the the double step for the majority, and you see those numbers. So moving along, motion to approve compensation for returning non-teacher employees as presented. With the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six percentage increase of, and again, this is one of the rare times where we just give a fill in the blank. Uh whatever percent uh as uh suggested by those making the motion, et cetera, is recommended. I believe we'd have a motion second discussion, although theoretically, you're the board, if you have questions for Business Manager Holtz or me up front. We're really not going to stop you from asking a question first, if you would prefer. Is it okay for me to add President Stefani, it's free, always one of those, there aren't too many. Pause awkward moments in our annual uh board thing, but this is one of those, because we give you the options. Similar to what you asked about before, Randy, right, like, instead of a clear recommendation, this is one of those, especially since Jake and I are both where. I think historically in our district, we have felt it appropriate, at least during my time here and there, have more of a fill in the blank type.
And we're okay with having discussion without the first and second?
I don't know.
Let's let's do, let's, I I would feel more comfortable, we had a motion first to get the.
In that case, I'll make a motion to approve compensation for returning non-teacher employees as presented with a twenty-five. Twenty-six percentage increase of three point seven five percent.
All right, so now we're to discussion, we have a mo- so sorry, your motion by by Commissioner Starr, second by Commissioner Schultz. To uh to. Approve compensation for not, for returning non-teacher employees as presented with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six percentage increase. Of three point seven five percent. So discussion.
One concern that I have is that we have a lot of turnover in some of these positions. Um and I'm wondering if one of the reasons is not just that, you know, the job is hard, but also because. They can get the same pay and, you know, in working at McDonald's or something like that. Um so I just, I'm wondering, like, I sent an email about why people leave, like, if we could do exit interviews to understand if pay. Is one of the root causes that we have so much turnover. Um because I think we can all agree that it's beneficial to our kids and the, you know, the schools, if we have stability. And if it means going a four point five percent increase, then. I would say that that probably would. Um work out better, you know, for our kids. And I don't know that, because I don't know, like, I would, I would want to know, is that part of the reason that we have so much turnover?
Then within the group, as we know, we really have several different types of positions. I don't want to put words in your mouth, so feel free to add on to this, Allison, if I'm not capturing correctly. The example you shared, I think, right, is largely what we've talked about, and I'll say in roughly the past decade, right? The whole uh, you know, as far as workforce for hourly positions, right, that's very different than it was. Not too many years ago, and there's at least a couple of you that deal with with hiring and all that, with those hourly positions, and you know that as well, if not better than me. So I think, once upon a time, right, any hourly position with the school district, even some like part-time. Or back then, districts sometimes had playground supervised, right, some of the different things that for various reasons have gone away for the most part, right? Were in high demand, because that was a way for a person kind of, I'll use the old phrase, to get their foot in the door. And then eventually get a position with the district when there weren't nearly the number of hourly positions available, or even. Right, the number and maybe quality of hourly positions that we see uh with uh with hiring today. So I think there are different ways, um trying to remember the exact timeline or process, so Jake, you can add if I missed this, but. The concept of looking at our hourly, like, what we call teacher associate positions here, right, some districts call. Districts call those paraprofessionals, depending on some of us that have lived elsewhere, right? And really trying to say, hey, let's look at those positions, what's an appropriate, you know, what. What uses our tax dollars effectively, but tries to get us in the best position to land those, and then having, in essence, three tiers. Right, of what that is, and then for a kind of a start for this dollar amount. And then right here, that next year, maybe different types of special education student needs, or really that highest tier, right, at a higher rate yet. We've looked at that, it's certainly not perfect, I think it articulates it better than we used to, um but yeah, I I think there continue to be challenges. You know, because, you know, any number of different businesses, right, can can offer different hourly rates.
What what are the, for the hourly employees, where where is that, like, what's the lowest hourly rate that we're we're. Kind of paying right now?
So AIDS, uh teacher aides, um are gonna, they have the, they're the only ones that have a scale. Uh a starting scale, anyway, base is sixteen dollars an hour, and right, and then if you're coming in. Uh say you're a teacher license, or you're going to do a specialty position, the Safe Harbor Special Ed. Uh certainly, yeah, like Moy doing E L, um there's a a dollar fifty supplemental pay. Um and then if you're in a tier three position, generally, that's going to be, again, those those really rough uh special ed kids. Uh uh including like diapering stuff, uh that's an extra fifty cents an hour. So somebody coming in with no experience is going to, you know, doing that tier three uh is going to be eighteen dollars an hour. And then we'll adjust uh generally, I look at a quarter, a a year of similar experience.
Hey, thanks for sharing that, Allison, I think that meaning that I, like what you said, like do some exit interviewing and also. You know, look at like the other jobs around the county and stuff, and see like, you know, what those folks are, you know, doing with their employees to keep them and stuff too, you know, like. This is not just hourly stuff, it's also like the quality of your workplace too, so, I have to think about that too, are we, as a district, one. One that people want to work for, you know, or work with, and what are we doing right, you know what I mean, so. Because other districts and stuff, we we actually go and see, like, my wife just recently went and did a moonlight thing in Gibraltar. And she was like blown away by it, but I'm not going to say anything about that history, I'm just saying, we're doing great here. You just need to think about that, other stuff too, you know, I mean, like, and like you said, Allison, it might just be pay, it might just be other reasons, we don't know, so. Thank you for sharing that and being willing to say something about it.
I I had shared with Allison that. So very different in my time in Oshkosh, but in my other districts have been about eighteen hundred kids or smaller. And when you're in a district that size, you have a very good sense, right? Whether there's an official process like an exit interview or survey, or whatever you want to call it, right? Or not, like, you have a very good sense why people are coming and going. All right, now, within that, there are two very broad categories as well, right? There's people moving to town for the position, because it's a teacher position, it's an administrative position, whatever you want to say, right? Then there's people, right, people aren't moving from far away to take a TA position, right? It's an hourly position, whether, you know, McDonald's, Quick Trip, uh right? Thankfully, we don't have an Amazon fulfillment center on the edge of town, right, but I mean, all these other situations. I again, not saying any of right or wrong or better or worse, it's just, it's just different. So we have a situation, right, you shared, I think some of what you shared, Damian, right, you know, like, hey, there's just a lot more hourly opportunities for people that live locally. I think what happened for us, I'll say, in the last couple of years, right, with some of the childcare changes. We saw, right, some of our teacher associates leaving kind of the lower, you know, elementary in general, going to childcare. And I have no problem saying within administrative meetings, and people had pointed out, yeah, you know, I said, well, you know, some of them will leave and never come back, some will come back. Right, and exactly, you know, the second part of that, we've seen that now, not just with a couple of examples maybe from tonight, but others, like, okay. Try it over there, you know, maybe they could afford to whatever the district will pay, will pay you a quarter more, as in one of those exam, examples that wasn't really sustainable. Sometimes people also realize, like, well, you're with the school district, again, not everyone looks at it this way, but the hourly rate. Hmm, an hourly rate at some businesses is is just that, it's only the hourly rate, right? Some other places in town, including us, have an hourly rate, and then offer other types of benefits with that, so sometimes people too. Um as they have a chance to think about it, or the age of their kids, or plan for the future, like, oh, there's some other things to it than the hourly rate, right? And even though we, we have staff that explain that to them, sometimes it clicks at a different time. I think, I mean, that's, again, a number of good comments, and some of you deal with this all the time, but it's. It's just, it's very different now than earlier, even in my admin career, trying to bring hourly staff into the district, because there's so many more options. Not that we still don't want to know, but again, I think, kind of like Jake shared in the last learning session, right, yes, that was teacher positions, but like. We have a very good sense why people are coming and going, and why we have vacancies, which is why I put it right on the slides. Hourly is a little bit different, right, we still have a sense, but there's going to be more of it, there just is.
And I I mean, I would, we do, like, uh. Keep track of where all the other uh school districts in the area are at, with the similar positions. Uh something like a McDonald's, Quick Trip, it it does come up every so often, um. Uh those are tough to shake chase, it would, we offer difference, right? Work uh conditions, for example, nobody's working weekends here, whereas by work, Quick Trip. Automatic, um so tough to match it there, uh competitive still. Um and then also, I know this year, uh similar to the compensation review. Um we've started a, I'll call it an aid leadership team, um to be able to make sure we're out in front of that. Um uh again, similar to what we're doing with the teachers, so that we're, we are out in front of that. Um and not, not just reacting. Yeah, yeah. One of the things that uh we recently did at the hospital was to paint that entire picture. Yeah, you're getting sixteen dollars an hour, or above with your benefit package and everything else, it comes out to twenty-five dollars an hour, it may be something you consider. But um, you know, the seasonal, seasonality in Door County, it's another, my ear to that. Uh just one other question is, do we have like the average uh increase with the uh teachers? With with what we've done with the ladder, like, is there an average percentage uh with all those teachers?
Yeah, this year, uh it was six percent with the adjustments, generally, you're going to see uh. Yeah, it's going to depend, you're going to be in that three percent range uh in a given year with no adjustments.
Yep, and that was part of the thinking behind, right now. Yep, and that was part of the thinking behind, right, not by any means trying to put the board in a spot, especially, we know it's a state budget year, as we've talked many times. But I'm like, okay, what is their logic, and as Jake and I talked about, I'm like, well, trotting out for this group. Whether we're a part of it or not, the six percent, that's a little, right, the teacher situation's different, right, a lot of work going on there over the years. But that's where we said, okay, where is CPI, just thinking out loud, okay, what's maybe a midpoint? Cause at that time, we didn't know what the percent for teachers was gonna be when we started, and just saying, okay, logically. Let's just try to continue to give the board, again, about three options, uh, that we can then work with for that next.
I guess one other thought that occurs to me, now we'll quit asking questions, is, um. Did you consider running it, like, splitting, um, this group, we have them all grouped together? But I think my concerns were specifically around like paraprofessionals, or what do we call them, teacher associates?
Teacher, yeah.
Because after we see so many over, like. Would it be possible to consider maybe for future? When we're looking at budget, to split them out, depending on what the outcome of your review purpose?
For sure, I think, like, uh, I don't know if you mentioned it, uh, earlier this month, last month. Uh, back when I initially started, um, I think that was Tina or Jake, I don't know, um. Uh, or Dan.
Yeah, it's, I corroborate that, but. What, my first few years, we did three different motions and actions, it ended up being the same percentage. So at some point, someone said, well, maybe we can just, and I don't remember the specifics anymore, just kinda go with that. But that is part of the reason I did keep the, kind of the list of three, we certainly could do that. Kinda what I think I'm hearing here, especially as we know we'll have more state budget information coming. Is that, you know, maybe, um, not just reporting, maybe even part of a learning session this next year. Kind of on what we're seeing with hourly staff. Uh, in the area district wise, as well as other jobs, and just kinda sharing that with the board, like, okay, here's what we've gathered, you know. Is, are we coming to a point where there is a way to, you know, or a need to make a little bit bigger tweak than we would in a typical year with. Again, basically, the cost of living increases, people have called it over the years. Uh, but we, we could pull together some additional information, some history, some of what, like Jake, I mean, I I probably have had three email or three messages today. On this type of topic. Uh, not from our staff per se, but from one or more other districts that are going through similar things to us, going, okay. Where are you guys at with this, or what has your board approved or considering, and I know there's one that'll reach out to me in the morning, said, you know. Is it okay if I follow up, just to know what your board approved, and I said, absolutely. So yeah, that's, that's kind of an ongoing thing, especially this time of year. But yeah, we could pull together some info for you next year, for sure.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I'm interested in too is like, um. Does it matter, like, if we did give them more of an increase, like, would it stop the, like, turnover and like? How big of a problem is it for students that they have to like? Meet new teacher associates through the year multiple times, like?
Depends. I mean, in fairness, right, you probably know that by asking the question, right, some of our students. Don't have as much contact with teacher associates, right, by their very nature. Most of those positions agree be, or exist because of special education related services, certainly have some at the lower elementary level as we should. So I mean, that's gonna run the gamut, I think, honestly, now, this is a bigger topic, and I don't wanna. Doesn't really impact whatever you vote on here, but the concept of, I think where we're going. Is fewer hourly positions in school districts in the future. And I don't just mean like, okay, we're being careful with attrition with teaching positions, right, so to kind of responsibly look at that with budget. Enrollment, as you've talked about, Mike and others have, based on the last couple of school, you know, education conventions in Milwaukee. But the reality is, probably where we're going, this is my two cents, you can agree or disagree, but fewer. Kind of TA type positions, and I don't mean everything overnight, right, but fewer positions. And then trying to say, okay, of the ones we're keeping, teachers know, okay, I don't have as many as I had X number of years ago, but hopefully I have more consistency. Which also impacts kids, to your question, and also like, okay, we're gonna have fewer for various reasons, cause of supply and demand, honestly, is one of them. And then say, okay, maybe we're paying, relatively speaking though, a little bit more for the fewer positions we have than we historically did. Because of the context of the market, I just, I think that's what the future probably holds with these types of positions and, you know, we would not be alone, I don't think, in that.
Um, my only comment before we, maybe, maybe you can call a question on this is, is. Um, I would also be interested in. Like the T, the the teachers associates that we have that are in. Really a rough situation, or they might be handling a special ed situation where we. We have some things going on right now that we're trying to get to the bottom, that, you know, when. I don't think it, it may have as much to do with pay as it has to do with what they have to go through, right, and those are high. Uh, high turnover positions. Because of, because it's hard, I couldn't do the job, you know, it takes a special person. So, I'd like that feedback, like of of the people that, okay, it's it's been this many TAs, and then they're in this kind of, kind of position. Or, just so that we, we would have an idea, okay, so what can we do? What can we do, cause it, it is, it is the double, cause you're right, we're probably going down with the month, but then. How are we gonna handle that, that populace, right, of kids? So, anyway, that kind of feedback be helpful. So, back to this, the good news is, these are three options at least, I mean, we are giving, giving an increase here, no matter what we do, if we do. So, uh, further discussion, or should we call this, what, again, the motion to just remind everybody is the middle one. Your motion.
I'll just have one more question, if we all vote, does it have to be unanimous, or you can just say, okay?
No, it just, it it just would be, um. You know, it would, it would pass by, by.
By majority.
Yes. Or fail by majority, one way or the other. So, um. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And one abstaining, sorry, you did tell me that. Did you get that? Next one, approve health insurance offering for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, we had talked about.
Yeah, Jake's kinda walked us through this a couple of times, and again, very low level minor changes compared to some things to the past, and was. Certainly some employers are navigating. All right, so, we've been working through a health insurance renewal process after being with Pevia three sixty the past six years, as you know. Uh, because of the two-year agreement signed last year, the best option moving forward at this play, at this point was certainly to continue to work with Pevia three sixty. Uh, Jake worked with M three R broker on some small plan design changes for next year. Updated plan designs, uh, accompanied the packet, they're kind of a sideways grids, uh, kind of colorful, if I can recall picturing those. A motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six health insurance plan design offerings as presented is recommended.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six health insurance plan design offerings as presented. We have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Schultz, seconded by Commissioner Hawes, to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six health insurance plan. Design offering as presented, for the discussion. Hearing none of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry, now down to approve the photo photography services vendor.
Yeah, since our current photography vendor is retiring at the end of the year. We put out a photography services RFP in April, selection committee of eight individuals who's formed to review proposals. Uh, that met the May first deadline, as well as decide which vendors would then kind of advance to the next round to be invited in for a presentation to our committee. I communicated with seven vendors and the district received six vendor proposals. Committee narrowed down those six to four vendors who came in for presentations to our group on the afternoon of Monday, May twelfth. In the end, the vendor that rose to the top for the committee in terms of services offered, pricing to families. Additional service trips to each school to capture more photos, et cetera, was visual image photography. Kind of go by VIP for short, based in Cedarburg, Wisconsin. VIP is a third generation family-owned company that began by doing sports photos and got into the school photography business. Uh, the gentleman who would become our sales representative, Steve LaMaster, has been with the company for about thirty years. Uh, would be ready to come to the district to meet with key staff members to be following board meeting approval, to ensure things are ready for next fall. Again, on just a few of the highlights, not forty of the tiers. VIP would provide complimentary classroom group photo to every elementary student, even if a family does not or is not able to order photos. Uh, VIP has their own printing lab in Cedarburg, utilizes a system that allows parents to see pictures with the watermark. Online and then place their orders accordingly, so they know what they're ordering. And picture orders would be shipped to families at home, so less for our offices to deal with. There'd also be pictures provided to the schools and athletic department, for example, for social media purposes. And they also have a process for allowing parents to, uh, view those additional photos online, um, to really have a portal that they call it. Uh, so parents can, uh, view and even order those special photos as well. While the school really doesn't pay the vendor for services per se. It's rather families who choose to purchase or not school pictures, athletic pictures, et cetera. I felt it was important to get the board's staff of approval for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the money that our families would pay to a vendor, especially over time. I should also note that we're not currently specifying a specific duration for the partnership. VIP understands, I talked to two of their key people, um, after the committee had kind of wrapped up. That we want excellent service and products for our families, and if that goes well, we can have a partnership that lasts quite a period of time. If the partnership would not go well, right, regardless of contract length, they know we'd be looking for a new vendor. So a motion to approve visual image photography as our photography services vendor, beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Fiscal year is recommended.
I move to approve visual image photography as the photography's. And as our photography services vendor, beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal fiscal year.
All right, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Howard. To, uh, approve visual image photography as our photography services vendor, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
I just gotta put a screw in.
It's been Matt forever, right?
Yes, yeah, I don't even know the number, long, long time.
Yes, I mean. It was always easy, cause we lose everything, to just call him and get me to this way. So, in our notes, already figured out operationally, like, there's gonna be a link on our webpage that. Lets everyone have easy access to that online portal.
We've talked about, so, yeah, great question, wait, so, I will email them probably tonight, they have an email drafted. To the various school secretaries and some other key personalities about the meeting, when they're gonna come, I'll stay overnight. Steve will do some meetings on Monday and some the next morning. To kind of go through like, hey, here are the specifics we need as we plan ahead to like communications to families. Sure, as I said, well, like, whether it's our electronic summer kind of registration, communication. Right, different things, that principles, communicate, right, the secretaries, whether the end of the year, beginning of the year, both. Uh, so kind of walk through that process, they have a process. Uh, where I remember the number, anytime there's gonna be an official picture day, if you will. Um, as opposed to like retakes, like where they have for communications that they push out to families. So, one of the, so like Amy in our tech office who deals with data, right? Amy was one of the people I had involved with the committee, so they can kind of talk that, uh, data language, if you will. And then what we talked about through the secretary and principal to like, hey, giving families the heads up that this is, this change is coming. And that, you know, they will receive communication, especially like next fall. And that, oh, you know, it's not spam, right, so just kind of walking through until families are used to, oh, getting that communication. Whether through our system or directly from the company. Uh, so a few different things, I know a couple of, uh, well, a few of the members are also. Uh, parents or moms, if you will, kids that have been or are in the system, and they talked about different ways, like, oh, they like being able to go back. And get something from a previous year, you know, say some of us, a few of us in this room can appreciate planning graduation party and like. Oh boy, I don't know that we were so good about a couple of those school photos, if we, you know, like, over time. That a family can go in and have access, uh, to really multiple children if they have them. And be able to order reorder certain things, so yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing the system that is built. We went through this in my previous district shortly before I came here, so I was aware already at that point. Really where a lot of that online ordering and green screen technology and really where they're going with all that.
Thank you.
They were at the conference, and I spoke to them at the conference, they're, they're. They seem pretty, like, it's, it's a different, it's a different, you know, it's just a, a more modern tape.
Yeah, I appreciate the old fashioned stuff, but I do appreciate the modern stuff. Sure, everyone.
They realize that, and all the vendors, they were very responsive and right, I mean, some, the committee felt were a much better fit than others, we felt we had. You know, a couple of really drawn candidates with this one being, uh, further ahead, if you will, or. Say second place, but just to give you the gist, um. The, the, the family that owned, right, three generations of ownership, they do spend some time in the county, so I think that's part of the reason, I talked with another vendor. And they said, why, I haven't had them come into our area before, well, they spend time up in in Door County, Chambers Island, et cetera, each summer. And so, I don't know if they're looking to expand in this area or what, so, they were, they were excited to take a run at, uh, providing us with service.
So, any further discussion? So we know local vendors, and I don't know if anybody else, somebody even locally.
Yeah, I would say DePere was the close, the next closest.
Yeah.
Um, and there were a couple kind of down the bend there, I'm trying to think of the other one, it was technically Pulaski, but yeah. DePere, Pulaski were a couple of the closest possibilities beyond that, and then it kind of went.
Are they goofy? Cause ortho was very goofy. He got some smiles on.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna comment one way or another on the goofy thing, but I know what you're saying.
All right, I'm gonna call, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry, uh. Then, the, the next point is, is information only, receive the draft twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Board meeting calendar.
Yes, it's a Demise took a run at it, and I assisted with just a few of the little pieces that we thought were a little unique, but we drafted that for the packet. Guessing you probably would approve the third Wednesday. Officially, right, you will approve that meeting calendar with any nuances like October, January, right, so everyone knows in the public. What the official meeting calendar is next month, but you have that in your package, just you can kind of start marking your calendar accordingly, if that's helpful to you. That's all we have there.
Um, and then next policy review update, Act twenty, first reading.
Yeah, I, I know you're disappointed, usually see a long list, but we do have policies, um, this is one we knew was coming, um. As far as third grade promotion and retention, uh, it says in twenty twenty-three, Wisconsin enacted Act twenty, as you know, with literacy efforts. As part of this law, school districts have to implement a policy of promoting students from third to fourth grade, following a model provided by the DPI. Uh, Neola, along with Leo guidance, developed a policy that complies with Act twenty, as well as the DPI model. Uh, districts are required to adopt the policy, uh, by July first, even though enforcement's delayed until, uh, September of twenty twenty-seven. Right, we know that this would maintain statutory compliance, our people internally, uh, did take a look at this. Whether it was Jen from Teaching and Learning, right, or Katie at Sunrise, that they had a chance to look at this. And make sure that the language makes sense with what we're doing, you know, we've invested a lot of time and money in literacy efforts and. Everything lined up real well, so thanks to them for the assistance there, again, a first reading that will be listed a second time next month.
We are to the reports section of the union, um. I know you mentioned CISA, any CISA reports or anything you wanna?
Um, not really, like, like I said, it was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars of services, but it's a. Providers to our district, um. I did have some notes, let's see, there are some different ways that they could support grant reading, I think. Know, it was interesting, um. Yeah, maybe I'll come back, I'll circle back, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I just, you mentioned this, I didn't mean, caught in the spot.
I should have brought the notes with me, I like circled a couple of things, but, oh, I can email them too.
All good, I mean, the only thing I had on, what Allison said, right, so, we do pay a fee to be members of CISA seven, and we can choose. We choose kind of the lowest, if you will, service level of, I don't know, it's ten days of service or whatever it is. But then Allison's point, right, they wanna provide value, they know how it works, right, to all the districts, so, there's different grants or. Dollars that we receive, I'm trying to think Jake for like, things related to school nursing. Right, or, right, there's different types of things, there's things that Principal Nervy does with, right, kids that go through different CD courses. You've heard Mark Smullen talk about, um, EL services, right, so we know we have a teacher, Julia, coming on board. While we know that there's a key person or people, person or two, excuse me, in CISA seven that are connected, there's networks. I go to a monthly meeting, Jen Weber goes to a monthly meeting, right, there's a variety of different things, so basically, they say, yes, you pay us. But they give each sheet a district, or each district a sheet, I got, I think the same one you got that says, all right, just wanna let you know that we brought this much value, you know. Beyond what you pay us. We've brought you additional services, so yeah, it's, it's fine.
Yeah, they did, they were gonna offer like some training, maybe to the teacher associates, something that they were gonna offer.
Yeah, there's a variety of different things, the principals, Jen, Lindsay and I, I'm all see. And then we kind of, some were interested in, some were not, but.
Yeah, okay.
All good.
Alright, Principal Nervy, you are up.
Alright, you've heard a lot of me already today, or I felt like I've been talking a lot today, so I'll keep it short. So Dan can be happy with me. We talked about the seniors' last day coming up next week already, graduation is Saturday, May thirty first. Thank you all for sharing, you know, if you'll be able to be there, and how it's gonna look like, I will send out some information shortly to you as well. As you know, for those who've done it before, those who haven't, you sit up on stage, you help walk the students in, it starts the ceremony. You'll be sitting up on stage and then handing out diplomas, and so Mrs. O'Hanley, who does the reading of the names, will announce. Which board member is handing out the diplomas? And then that's when you'll know, but I'll share out a nice color coded picture of everything to show you which students you'll be covering and that sort of thing, so. I'll be setting that out to make it as easy as possible for all of you, so you feel comfortable sitting up there on stage. The only other thing I really wanted to mention real quick is we did get our pre ACT and ACT data back from our students. That took that in, in April. And so this week, we started doing one on one conversations, I use the phrase, by name, by face. Because as we look at the data, it's really easy to look at percentages and, and trends, and. Those are all things we want to look at, but we really want to break that data down by name, by face, each of our individual students. So our teachers this week have started meeting one on one with every student, our freshman, sophomore and junior students who took the pre ACT or ACT. To go over their scores with them, so students feel an ownership. Few years ago, they got their score, we moved on to the next thing, we've really worked hard over the last several years to explain that score, work with students on that score. So they know what it means and, and can aim higher for that, so we started going through that this week. Friday, we have an in-service day with our staff, and we'll be going to deeper in that with our teachers to show how that looks and what that looks like. And then I'll be sharing that out with the board as well, as we move forward with that data show, so that's kind of the, the latest update here.
Thanks, Professor Nervy. It's all Smolins coming on now. Let's survive some youth girls softball tonight, huh?
Ringing out.
Ringing out. Otherwise, they've been talking to her about the cold and the wind out of their.
Thank you. Hey, so I touched base with Mr. Probst, I mean, this is, say, we had sixty other students in chaperones, and I think somebody who's been on this trip, and I remember right. Mister Star, you were the first, your class was the first to go, correct, is that right?
Or is that? I'm not sure, I'm not really a teacher. I was the first LA arts class.
Oh, okay.
I think we were a couple minutes of the DC trip.
That's pretty cool, so it's been, it's been going on for quite a while, it's, 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 it's a great trip, but it's not like Congressman, we today, they got. A tour at Congress, they get, they get to go through the doors that you and I, if we went through, we could never get to see, so. It's kind of, kind of cool how that works out. As they're wrapping up their eighth grade year, our incoming fifth graders who's came in, took a tour, met with the teachers. Several commented, they really like Mister Jacobson's chairs, so they're looking forward to that. Of course, puts it all in perspective, right? So. And there is a meeting for, with those parents on June third at six fifteen PM in the high school auditorium. Where we're gonna kind of go a little like middle schooler, as a student and a parent, as some students are gonna talk to some parents, but. You know, this is how expectations, what it's really like behind the doors, because you don't get, parents don't get to see it. I'll kind of talk with the parents about expectations and the students, so be more, learn more with the teachers, kind of, the core teachers of what, what's expected from them. And then just to wrap up on that, it's just, you know, up, what's upcoming. Is things that were happening up this year, May twenty ninth to June third, final exams, we have a geography V on the same night on June third, followed by. Honor Society at five that night as well. That parent meeting, and then the next day, we have an incentive field trip going to Bay Beach, and then wrapping it all up. Tiny little boat with the eighth grade ceremony at ten thirty AM, so hope to see you there, so.
Thank you, Mark. This is Smolins, come on down. And you're happy because you have an administrative assistant to approve, so there you go.
Great, so we're, we're like that. So we are beginning new things, band fittings happen, fourth graders coming, it's just kind of a fun thing to watch them try out the different instruments. And just we have such a great band program, so to see the start of it is awesome. So that happened just a couple of weeks ago. Our fifth grade swim unit wrapped up yesterday, and that was something we, this is the second year we did it, but. To see kids go from being afraid of the water to actually being able to swim, like, it's kind of a life changing thing, like a life saving piece, so I'm really. Proud of our staff and the partnership with the YMCA that we're able to pull that off, and the kids really like it too, it's. It's been good. Birthday field trips, we did it differently this year, fifth grade went to Potawatomi last week to do a cleanup. Fourth grade went to Peninsula today, and third grade went to Newport today, Alice and I were in hiking, hiking boots with the third graders. It was a little chilly, but we hiked and it was beautiful, and did a craft peninsula, they cleaned up the beach, it's, anyway, so it's. We have such a beautiful colony, I love that we get to do that here and for our kids to learn it. We're doing data digs two, reviewing data on Friday, we have a talent show tomorrow. So this is the fun time, so, and a show and tell, so lots of talent, we have some animals coming for the show and tell part two, so some race cars. It's gonna be wild, stop by.
Principal Smol, are you gonna dazzle them with any talent?
I'm not very talented in. About it, I have, the kids bring animals, we have bunnies coming, bearded dragon, we've had axola. It's just that the show part of it goes first for an hour, where they show their collections of things, and then. The talent piece, we're singing and dancing and the normal, we've had comedians.
That'll be great. And may the, the animals that can't get too close together, may they be able to stay. Principal Devellers, welcome to the podium.
Uh, so we're wrapping up the year too, of course, as everyone else is, kids are enjoying time out in the community of lots of things that I shared in my written report. We're looking forward to tomorrow, the end of the year event where families come, the biggest concern there is parking, so we've sent out a million parking things. We're getting the shuttle from Sawyer Park, it's always, it always goes well, but it also makes me a little nervous, but people also do a good job. And it's so nice to see families in our schools with kids at the end, just showing them everything all year, it's just exciting. We also have a whole school field trip, we've never done it before at Crossroads, May thirtieth, looking forward to getting every one of us there together. To enjoy, hopefully, a rainless, beautiful day. Planning for next year continues, transition activities are a big part of what we do, kids are taking many trips over to second graders and. Kids with special needs, multiple trips over to Sunrise, it's a big transition for kids, if they started at four K, gone through second grade, and now listen to school, big school. We don't take that lightly, and we want to make sure that it's very smooth for them, so most kids are going once or twice. We are also on the thirtieth in the morning, going to be switching classrooms, so kids get a taste of next year, that kind of thing, and. And kids that want, that need more connection, maybe, teachers are reaching out, because we've started class lists, they are not finalized till mid August. But we are really making sure that kids feel comfortable and they, they know what to expect, it just makes it more fun for all of them. We have almost fifty students registered for four K already this year. And that may not seem like a big deal, but it really is for us. Our four K event that we had recently was a huge success, went really well, and got a lot of good feedback. Kids just keep popping in our door, so we're very excited, because that was one of the outcomes that we had hoped for, so that's what I have to.
Thank you. Second grade, right, it's not the last day of school.
We do the second group, right, and the.
That's last day.
As they're transitioning, and Jen steps forward, Katie talked about the field trip on the thirtieth, Crossroads. Doesn't seem like it, not with the weather, but we're projected to have, and we'll see, seventy four degrees that day. It's gonna seem like ninety four after the past few days. I just want to put it out there, even if it cools by several degrees, we're still trending in the right direction. On the third, on the thirtieth. On the thirty first for graduation, it says seventy one degrees.
Instead of last, because while everyone gets to talk about field trips and band fittings and all kinds of things, I have to talk about things like. Behavior audits and data warehouse.
They're gonna have to snazz it up then, Jen.
I know, I'm so sorry, so I always have a top ten, but I decided on the top three, so I apologize. It seems like my job is very boring, but it actually isn't, it's rarely boring. As we try to close up the year in the teaching, learning and tech departments, like everybody else here, we live. Both in ending this year and trying to plan ahead for next, which can be a little bit crazy, but the top three things that we're working on. Right now are that SEL, so social emotional learning and behavior audit, if you'll remember, to a couple of learning sessions ago. We talked about how we wanted to model this next move after what we learned in our literacy initiative. And the first move there was to have some folks from CISA come in and actually just kind of. Move around our schools, and then provide us with some big ideas of reports. Specifically, we asked for overall current status of our system and some quick wins. So that's what's coming up next for us, as we try to plan for next year. I mentioned data warehouse, I've also told you about NextPath. And while data warehouse doesn't seem very exciting, it's my job to make it exciting and usable, so you'll hear more about that as well. And as a few of the principals mentioned, we're planning for in-service on Friday. And I do get to say some points about that, because we always have something called a lunch and learn. Which is the highlight of every Wednesday, really, after all the data and all the things that we have to do. In relation to closing up the school year, our teachers are provided with a lovely lunch and nap. Which everyone really looks forward to. Lastly, I think I just checked one meeting here tonight, maybe for the first time, it's gonna still be what I know. Thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Mister Jay. Lindsay's dealing with a sick child, so you're giving her time, yeah, so, dig what you got.
The only thing would be really the state budget, it actually does, at this point, feel like we might get something over the summer. For state budget, not September, as we had originally heard, that's just more of a gut feeling than anything. Again, than we've heard, the. Conference I was at last week, the, really the big session where I thought I might hear something. Was interrupted by a tornado warning, that's the bad news, the good news is that presenter. Left that cliff, cliffhanger and is coming next week, actually, to the plausible regional, that's being hosted in town here. And so perhaps some news there, but yes, otherwise. Hoping for some news on state budgets, I think we outlined some stuff, meeting with Joel Kitchens a couple of weeks ago. Yeah.
I will highlight one item and add to two from my report. Highlighting the developers tour, so May thirtieth, there's gonna be a developers tour, partnership with the city in DCEDC again. So that has happened a couple of times before. This year's tour will focus on residential, commercial and industrial properties with. What I've been told so far, the most interest from developers on the residential side, so that's positive, right? With knowing we need residential housing and certainly more single family homes in the area. It's certainly possible, right, some of those will land in the city, but not necessarily the school district, but good news, because the superintendent, who's on the DCEDC board, at least for several more months. Has been invited to talk to the developers again, so I've done it a couple of times, I'll be there to represent us, so. I highlight that. And then the two items I'll add to beyond what was in the packet, so. On facility meeting, as Mike and I know, there was supposed to be a, a, a meeting with the city, the consultants, bunch of the other entities. About that feasibility study on May twentieth, unfortunately, there was a conflict with one of the consultants, so we've gone through. I don't know how many emails, but it is rescheduled for next Wednesday, so a week from today, Wednesday, May twenty eighth will be the next meeting, so I don't have anything new. As I hoped I would, with when we're gonna get our hands on that feasibility study. On those two different opponents, again, the one across the street is the one we're most concerned with. And then I'll just add to it, I did have the meeting planned with Brian Nichol from the Diamond Group on the communications and marketing front. One of the deliverables that they'll owe us based on what we've approved previously is a branding video. Alright, so kind of their, their top team comes out of Iowa to shoot footage. And they got excited about us, normally they would have tried to do that in the spring for us, to help us with next year, however. I told them it was fine not to rush, because the team would love to come up to Door County in fall, so the plan is that they're gonna come, actually. Homecoming week, Thursday evening, and then Friday, you know, visit each of the schools and get some footage, Thursday night soccer, volleyball. Friday football, you know, bonfire, you know, all the different things as well, getting into schools. So that we just kind of got arranged in the last couple of days, and then that would be something we could use for a variety of different purposes, video wise. And then some other things with their draft communication, marketing roadmap, that we're still kind of looking at and tweaking the timeline on for those services, so you've heard of all that. Been kind of holding for a few different reasons, but that's good news, I wanted to share. I'll end with that.
Alright. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
The motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Alright, do you motion and second to adjourn for discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?